I'd like to call to order the St. John Town Council meeting for December 30. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne, I'm sorry, Paul Panzik.
Here.
Wayne Pandinos.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swett.
Present.
Craig Phillips.
Here.
David Westland.
Present.
Beth Hernandez. Present.
Okay, we will look at item number four, approval of the minutes. You have the November 24th minutes. If there's no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 24th minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike Schilling, seconded by Wayne Pandinos. Roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik. Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Item number five, we are here this evening to also thank our fire chief, Mr. Fred Willman, for years of service to the town. Mike, would you like to handle this?
Yeah, that's fine. We've got a plaque up for here for you, but getting started, I'd like to thank Chief Willman for his 40 years of service, especially his 25 years of service as a fire chief in this town. And one thing you look, you know, when you're doing as a public servant and you're serving a community or a department, you want to make sure that when it is time for you to leave, that you have made it better than when you have taken it over. And one thing I will say for Chief Willman, and I've followed the St. John Fire Department for a large portion of my life, when Chief Willman came in 1996 and took over the fire department as chief, St. John Fire Department Emergency Medical Services wasn't really thought of. You know, we had a suburban, we'd go chase the ambulance that came out and, you know, Fred Willman was instrumental in bringing the first AED to the fire department and getting those vehicles certified to go out and respond to those emergencies. Then a couple of years went by and he became the first full-time fire chief in St. John. At that time, he was instrumental in starting the town's ambulance service and hiring its first full-time fireman. And throughout his career as fire chief, he has always, you know, did everything to improve the fire department, to leave it in a better place than it was when he took it over. And with that, I would like to, with the utmost respect and gratitude of the St. John Town Council and recognition of 40 years of service and dedication to the town of St. John and its residents, the customers, tremending as a volunteer firefighter and going into 25 years as the esteemed fire chief, we award you this plaque on the 30th day of December 2020. Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you to everybody here in the room and thank you to all of the citizens and presidents and members of the fire department that are not here in this room. We got a lot done and I loved every minute of it, but I could not have gotten this done without the great people I had worked with. I went through a list the other night and since I was the chief until now, I have manipulated, guided, and inspired 175 people in the transition time and all the rest. And good Lord has allowed me to stay vertical and still breathe and all the rest where when we got into the annuals business, I don't think some of us knew, but not everyone was quite aware of all the people that don't get that opportunity. So He kept me healthy and provided me with good people and that's why we're here tonight. And I wish the guys that are going to carry the torch and keep going, I wish them all the best. And anything I could ever do, I will do. That's it. I miss my little black and white buddy who was here for 13 years, but there's another day and another time for that. So thank you all. I thank all of you. I appreciate it and will never forget this moment.
Thank you, Chief.
So Chief, you talked about passing the torch and that's where we're going to go next, the next step of our meeting here. As I'd like to, you know, thank the five men from the fire department that applied for the position to replace the chief with big boots to fill. I'd like to thank the members of the safety board who joined the town council in the interview process. Yeah, it was a good process and I wanted to, this evening, yeah, go take the next step and announce your replacement. So turn it over to Mike, who's the liaison for our safety board.
Thank you, Jerry. Yeah, like Jerry said, we, you know, we went through the interview process and at this time, we'd like to introduce Kevin Laduke as the next St. John Fire Chief.
And Beth, you want to swear him in?
All right. Yep.
If you want to raise your right hand and then repeat after me, I, Kevin Laduke.
I, Kevin Laduke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Discharge all my duties.
Discharge all my duties.
As fire chief.
As fire chief.
Of the town of St. John.
Of the town of St. John.
Lake County, Indiana.
Lake County, Indiana.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
All right.
I was very kind. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Kevin, why don't you introduce your family quickly?
Absolutely. Let me sign for you. Actually, it's my wife, Nicole, my son, Grayson, my mom, Mary Ellen, my sister, Elizabeth, Beth, and my dad, Kevin Laduke.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to be there. Hmm? Oh, yeah. That's right. We need to do that. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
We got a little bit excited and kind of jumped the gun a little bit. Mike was supposed to make the motion and we were supposed to vote on it or approve it. So if we could do that, you had a minute? Well, he made the motion, we just didn't get support and vote, so. Go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kevin Laduke the fire chief of the St. John Fire Department effective January 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Is there support for that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Paul.
Roll call, please.
All right, Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swett.
Yes. Congratulations once again.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
And so if you guys want to go, you may. If you want to hang around for the rest of our meeting, you can do that too. But you guys, thank you for your support and thank you for being here this evening, gentlemen.
So it starts a new decade.
Yeah, we got two new chiefs.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm sure Mr. Fred's going down 93 and 300, but I'm sorry for employing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
This room emptied out.
Yeah. I didn't want to keep them around all night long. They came for the.
Yeah, they have more sense, those.
Yeah, they came for the show, so, all right. I would like to also recognize, oh, wait just a second. He wouldn't like to make your annual address to the town council? At least it seems annual.
Certainly. It's not going to be an address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick remarks. It's good to be back. For those of you who don't know, I had a little sabbatical. It's the way I guess I'd like to call it, but I had important work to get done and I'm glad to be back, serving this capacity. And I'll come back to that, but I, when I attend these meetings, it takes me back because I was a town councilman in Sherrville for 10 years. So I've been through that and I was sweating bullets just a minute ago. I'm sure I'm glad that last motion passed since you already swore him in, right? So it's good work. And I've had the chance to work with Mr. Phillips before when he was with the city of Michigan City. And I'll never forget, we were in a meeting regarding the train bill that we were working on and he and the mayor were there and they came up with this, some idea, whatever it was. And I remember saying, "That's a pretty good idea. We can, we can do that." And he looks at the mayor, the mayor looks at him in absolute disbelief. So then they tried it again and they came up with something. I said, "Yeah, that's another good idea. We can write that into the bill." And then, of course, the third time, I had to push back, but, but they decided that they could work with me because I didn't always say no. And so I'm glad to see that he's here. I think he'll do a good job for you, so congratulations, Craig. And then, of course, I know Jerry for many years, but I got to tell a Paul Panzik story because Paul used to live in my neighborhood. And Paul was one of those guys that would call up every now and then, and you've all got him, that would have some concern, one reason or another. And I had a habit, and you're welcome to steal this idea, whenever somebody would do that, I would say, "You know what? I think we should get you on a commission so that you can handle this stuff yourself and save calling me." And I'll tell you 99 times out of 100, I never hear from that person again. But Paul was the one out of 100 and he said, "That'd be great." And we got him on the planned commission and he did a great job for us there and I think that got the bug started, so congratulations on your position on town council here in St. John.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think.
Yeah, give it a few more years. I'm just here to let you know that I'm available. I think many of you have my cell number. Things are going to come up in the session, which starts on Monday, by the way. I'm not quite sure just how that's going to flow with this virus business. It's, it's going to affect how we operate, how we handle committee meetings and the like. But be that as it may, we're going to get the work done that we need to get done. And there will be things that come along that your advisors are going to point out to you that need some attention. Feel free to reach out to me at any time. The sooner the better. I had a situation in another town where they, they got ahold of me and they were actually, they were trying to bring a liquor store into town. It was not a big deal. But as it turned out, it was corporately owned and it would have, and so it was, there were limitations in the law and there was a bill being brought forth just to prevent that company from coming in. And had I found out in enough time, we might have been able to do something about that. As it turned out, it was, it was too far in the process before I got alerted to that. So my point being, when something's going on, the sooner you can get ahold of me, the better, if it has to do with some concern you have on or around your town, okay? So, and you have my cell numbers, reach out any time. Of course, you can always get me through my assistant as well. And I'm happy to help. I've got several bills. You'll probably see some things in the paper. As many of you know, I've been working on better access to pediatric care for Medicaid patients for some time. We're going to have this time, bills in both the House and the Senate, and I think we're going to get something done on it this time. I'll also be carrying a bill to take care of our public schools and redefine the definition of what a virtual education is so that we don't have a problem with the funding apparatus. You've probably read about that in the paper where virtual schools don't get reimbursed the same amount as a regular in-person school. But what we have is a regular in-person school that can't be in person right now. We don't want to penalize them for that, so we'll be working on that as well. So that's all I need to make for my remarks. I'm happy to take any questions if, if you have any.
All is well.
All right, well, thanks for having me and great meeting.
Appreciate your support and coming out too.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for stopping by, Hal.
Thanks, Hal.
Okay, we will go to item number six, which is public comment. Anyone signed up, Craig?
No.
Anything emailed?
No.
Anybody in the audience for public comment? Okay, we will move on. Item number seven, new business. Item 7A is to consider the Community Crossings Grant Agreement. You have the document in front of you. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the grant agreement and authorize the town council president to sign.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. That will bring in $1 million from the state to help us do some of our road repaving projects. That's always good to have. 7B, ordinance 1721, which is an ordinance establishing the St. John Road Impact Fee. Who's going to address this? Craig, Brian?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we consider ordinance 721 on its first reading.
Okay, is there support for that?
I'll support it, but it needs to be corrected to 1721.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what did I say, Mike?
721.
Oh, sorry, 1721.
Okay. I've got a motion, I've got support. A roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
No.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And then Gerald Swett.
Yes. Okay, so since we did not get unanimous approval, we did approve the motion to consider, but we'll have to hold off for adoption until our next council meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Westland?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on to item C, Resolution 2020-12-30, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriations. Beth?
Items C and D are essentially the same. One is for your civil funds, the other is for your waterworks funds. It's just basically transferring money from one line item to another. This should conclude the remaining transfers for 2020.
Okay, any questions? Then I will entertain a motion for both C and D, Resolution 2020-12-30 and 2020-12-30A.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Is there support for both of those resolutions?
Second that.
Thank you, Paul. Roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Next item is item E, Resolution Number 2020-12-30B, which is a resolution creating the following new fund titles and numbers. I'll let you explain that, Beth.
Okay, so basically this resolution, these funds have already been created and they've already been assigned, fund numbers. It's my understanding, since they're special funds, this isn't necessary, but I prefer to be on the safe side rather than the sorry side, so I'm asking or just letting you know that we have created the U.S. HHS Stimulus Cares Act Relief Fund, Number 150, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, Number 151, and the 2020 GeoBond Fund, Number 315. So by passage of the resolution, you're approving the creation of these funds and the numbers assigned.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-12-30B?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2020-12-30B, a resolution creating the new funds.
Thank you, Paul. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swett.
Yes. Okay, that is approved, five to zero. Item F is Resolution 2020-12-30C, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds. Beth?
So last month or the month before, I can't remember off the top of my head, you guys approved a resolution transferring money from certain funds to the local road and bridge grant fund. This is the remaining matching fund we were going to use for your last community crossing grant project. We held off on this fund because of the coronavirus. We weren't certain that we would hit our estimated revenues in our MVH fund, which we unfortunately did not. So, you know, we didn't want to transfer over an amount that we weren't going to hit. So we're going to go ahead and take care of that. I think we estimated 290, about 300,000, and we ended at about 280,000 for the year. So we're going to be transferring over, that's our restricted portion of the MVH fund, to be used towards that crossing grant project.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-12-30C?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Number G, Resolution 2020-12-30D, which is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds.
This is your coronavirus relief fund that we just received money for, and it was decided, I believe, that we would, it was best served for us to reimburse our public safety payroll. So we're going to go ahead and transfer the money from the coronavirus relief fund to our general fund to do so.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-12-30D?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for it?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. We move on to item H, which is an easement agreement with Northern Indiana Public Service Company, NIPSCO, for electric facilities, an easement number 4516. Craig, more comments on that?
This is simply an easement that's been requested by NIPSCO for some work that needs to be done to the electrical facilities in the vicinity of the list station on the west side of Wicker Avenue, as, pretty much as the state's. It's part of the overall U.S. 41 improvements that are being made by the state and it's just a necessary step in the completion of that project. And so the council just needs to take official action to approve the easement that's been presented accordingly.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to grant easement number 45116 to NIPSCO and authorize the town council president to sign.
Thank you, Paul. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Item I, professional services agreement with Westland and Bennett for 2021. I have the agreement in front of you. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the 2021 agreement with Westland and Bennett.
Thank you, Paul. Is there support for that?
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wayne. Roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Item J is professional services agreement with Adam Decker for 2021.
Mr. President, if I can cover this one. So we had anticipated receiving the agreement language, but we have not yet to date, so I would ask you to just defer this to the next meeting if possible, please.
We can do that. Is there a motion to defer?
Motion to defer the 2021 agreement with Adam Decker, awaiting the agreement.
A roll call.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Jerry Swett.
Yes, that is deferred. Item K is our professional services agreement with Hassan Associates for 2021.
Make a motion to approve the agreement with Hassan Associates for 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Mike, seconded by Paul. A roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Jerry Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Item L, our professional services agreement with Baker Tilly for our financial advisors. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for us to sign a professional service agreement with Baker Tilly for the year 2021.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll second.
Thank you, Wayne. Roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swett.
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Item M is to consider appointment of the members of the town council to the redevelopment commission. It's normal routine for the five members of the town council to serve as the redevelopment commission, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzik.
Yes.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swatz.
Yes, that is approved five to zero. Item N is to consider the acceptance of a maintenance guarantee for Walden Clearing Phase One. We released the bond and letter of credit at the October twenty-eighth meeting in conjunction with several other bonds and the letters of credit. Anything else, Craig?
Uh, nothing else to add on this, other than it's, it's been reviewed and recommended for approval, so.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the maintenance guarantee for Walden Clearing Phase One.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike, roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Jerry Swatz.
Yes. Passes five to zero. Item O, consider the release, release of surety bond for Walden Clearing Phase Two in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents, and accept the replacement maintenance guarantee. This received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Anything to add, Paul? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
So.
To consider the release of surety bond for Walden Clearing Phase Two in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents, and accept the replacement maintenance guarantee, which received a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Paul, roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes, that is approved five to zero. Item P, consider the release of the surety bond for Summerlin Estates Phase One in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and accept the replacement maintenance guarantee. This received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Any comments, Paul? Nope, okay, I am looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to consider release of surety bond for Summerlin Estates Phase One in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and accept the replacement maintenance guarantee, which received a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike, roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swatz.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item Q, board and commission appointments. We have a number of openings for the boards for the town. We are going to appoint some of those this evening. Some of them, we still have a little bit of work to do, and we're looking for a few more applicants. But we will start with the BZA, Paul.
Yes, Mr. President, um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Kennedy as the town council appointment from the Plan Commission to the BZA.
Okay. There's support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike, um, a roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes, that is approved. And then we will move on to the Plan Commission, Paul.
So the Plan Commission has three open seats, it's an annual appointment for town employees required by state statute. We need three St. John town employees to be members of our Plan Commission. I would like to make a motion to appoint John Gill, Donna Little, and Jason Vlasic to these open seats.
Okay, thank you, is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian, a roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swatz.
Yes, and next one would be the EDC, and those are one-year appointments. We have six people who have re-applied for that position. So I will look for a motion to approve and reappoint John DeYoung, Rob Godoy, Carl Madsen, Erica Hill, Kelly Stoming, and Joe Berry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike, roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes, that is approved five to zero. We will go to the sanitary board, uh, there is one opening there, and Patty Sims Smercek, uh, term expires, and she has submitted her application, requesting to reappointment. So I will look for a motion to approve that appointment to Patty Sims Smercek for the sanitary district.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Wayne, roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes, that is approved five to zero. Safety Board, Mike?
Yeah, I have, um, two members, their terms are expiring at the end of this year, and both of them want to stay on, they applied. And I'd like to reappoint Ray Paradisio and Pat Moran to, uh, two full terms on the, uh, Safety Board.
Thank you, Mike, is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Wayne, roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. We go to the Waterworks Board, uh, those are one-year appointments, uh, we have, um, three seats. We have two that we're filling, correct, Wayne?
Yes.
Okay, so Ken Gimbalah and Bill Manassopoulos have both reapplied, um, for reappointment. So I'd like a motion to appoint those two, uh, members.
So moved.
Thank you, Wayne, support for that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian, roll call.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. And we also have the Tree Board, um, we are still looking for a couple of spots there. It's a five-seat board, and we do have some applications in there. Like to get that filled in before the, uh, next town council meeting, which will be in January thirteenth, correct?
Mr. President, I'd, I'd like to suggest that if, if we don't receive five applicants, that we, um, I believe there might be three applications out there, so we'll work on this over the next few weeks, and potentially just appoint a, a three-member board in, in the duration, and try to get some work accomplished there.
Okay, uh, Mr. Westlin, will that require an ordinance to change that board from five to three? Or at least if you could check that for us?
Your ordinance now says five members, right?
Yes.
So yeah, we'd have to change the ordinance, but you could appoint three to a five-member board, you have a quorum, right? It's just the problem is, it would have to be unanimous with everything. Now, I don't know how controversial your Tree Board is. So I don't know how hard it's going to be to get unanimity, but, so those are your two options.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions on board appointments? Then we move on, reports and correspondence. Uh, Brian, anything?
Not currently.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, I would, uh, you know, I, I began this year on January first, and, and ran down a list of, of things we'd accomplished by that day already, and I, I just wanted to, this is going to be briefer and shorter, but I wanted to recognize, uh, a, a lot of, uh, work done. And so first of all, I'd just like to thank all the town employees, the first responders, police and fire, public works, everybody for making it through COVID in twenty twenty. It's been a rough year, so appreciate all your hard work. And then just about our elected officials here, um, I was going to start with the council, Wayne's not here, but usually he'd be sitting down there. I appreciate his work on the water, sanitary board, and especially the parks, uh, I know he's dedicated to it. So a lot was accomplished in, especially in the parks area. We, we have a new employee, we're getting another new employee, we have a new director, we have all kinds of good things happening there, it's great. Mike has worked wonders with, uh, police and fire, uh, just did a great job with the interview process for the new chief, worked with our new safety board, the safety board's got some legs under him, and has been refining our processes, and I appreciate their work there. And, and Mike's been the leader in that, as well as helping me with the road projects and Ninety-third and, and, and all that stuff. So Jerry, um, does all the background legwork that no one sees as council president, he works hard at it, does a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that really doesn't get appreciated or seen by the public eye, but I, I do appreciate what he does every day. Uh, Brian, despite being ill this year, which a lot of people don't know, but I'm going to let that secret out of the, out of the bag if, if folks didn't, worked hard to, to stick with the road impact fee process, which is a grueling process by state statute. And tonight, we voted on it for the first time, so appreciate your hard work on that. You guys all know what I've done with the, the Plan Commission in updating subdivision control ordinance, and we're not going to have houses on pipelines anymore, and me and Mike are working hard on, uh, future road plans and, um, getting things done around here. So anyway, thank you for all your support, and just wanted to cover some of the major milestones that we've accomplished this year. Oh, and I got Beth down here, too. So Beth, um, appreciate you bringing up the, um, switch to Baker Tilly, the five-year plan, which is excellent. I actually looked at it again last night for a, a purpose. And, uh, so that's been appreciated, as well as your office always, uh, doing the Christmas at the park, and rearranging everything to make sure people got to see Santa Claus, so thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Paul.
Mike, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the members of the Department of Public Works, they were out last night, uh, removing the snow, first snowfall of the season. I think they did a pretty good job. And, uh, I'd like to thank all the members of the council, working with you guys. Attorney Westlin, Town Manager Craig Phillips, thank you for this year, Jason, Beth, thanks for all your help.
You're welcome.
You helped me in a lot of areas on the council, and I appreciate it. I call you all the time for.
I appreciate.
Support, and I appreciate that. I have nothing else, thank you, guys. Jerry, if I may interject.
Yes, Brian.
We shouldn't move on before we acknowledge the fact that Paul has worked very hard on projects ninety-six, and has put in a lot of time, effort, and work getting us to where we are today. And that project is slowly but surely moving forward and getting done. Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome, yes. Wayne, anything?
Well, I'd like to re, I'd like to just go along with what Paul said, uh, every, I agree with everything he said. Paul has put a lot of work into different things, uh, I, I do appreciate that. And, uh, Beth, uh, she adopted us, and now she don't have three kids, she's got eight kids, because she's the glue that keeps everything going. She's the go-to person, with her experience, we look good, uh, so I appreciate what she's doing. And one thing about the, I'd like to say, I didn't have the time to say about the, uh, the Fire Chief, Chief Willman, he put forty years in, but if you put in all the extra time, it's probably equivalent to, to fifty years, because that man was there all the time, Saturdays, Sundays, after hours. And I'd just like to put that into the record, that I appreciate it as a resident, uh, all the things that he did. May God bless him, uh, you know, on his retirement, and that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne, I, I appreciate those comments, and I echo the same thing. The chief, uh, the, the years of service he put in here were, were phenomenal, and, and he worked hard and hard, and was always there, um, always, always up front. So yes, thank you.
Jerry, if I may, one more comment about the chief.
Okay.
For the residents out there, I'm sure going to miss this, him rolling to a call at three o'clock in the morning down Ninety-third with his siren screaming.
Running right by your house, huh?
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, so I would like to kind of, kind of echo the same stuff that's been said tonight, I hate to make this a love fest, but, um, this council has accomplished an awful lot, um, in the twelve months that you guys have come in here. And I appreciate working with all of you, and the cooperation, um, that we're able to, uh, to work with, um, in accomplishing all this stuff. The development and the direction of this town, I, I think, is, is in good, uh, good hands. I'd like to thank Craig Phillips for his work there in helping us work through some of these projects, um, you know, getting the NERPC applications in, community crossing grant funds approved for a million dollars. Thank you for your work there, much appreciated. And yeah, it's, I'm looking forward to, um, you know, another year of, um, accomplishing a lot, but maybe at a little bit different pace. We don't, can take things just a little bit, uh, more deliberate, um, and I think things can work along much better that way. So, um, Beth?
No, I mean, I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one, um. I echo what, what you said, just, you know, next year being a little more, us, we're going to work together and be a little more deliberate with how quickly we move on, on certain things, just so we're, you know. I think you guys have tackled a, a bunch in your first year, I'm very, very proud of you guys for everything that you've gotten through. I'm, you know, and I'm, I'm looking forward to next year, so COVID's been a difficult year for, for everybody, so.
Okay. I, I would like to also thank Jason for his work on getting all this taken care of, and, um, all the meetings being recorded, being available for the public to see, uh, doing the Zoom meetings so that we could participate remotely. It's, it's been a challenge, but, um, it's, it's worked out very well, so thank you for your work there, Jason. And also working with Mr. Westlin this year. I appreciate, um, the way you handle things, your, your temperament, um, and your wise advice, so thank you for that. Craig, anything?
Yeah, I just, I sent out a note to the employees earlier today, but I just want to take the time to thank the employees for all the hard work that they've done. This, this has been a challenging year, presented us with a lot of difficulties, but I think that our employees have, um, risen to the challenge of delivering quality services to the residents and businesses of St. John despite those challenges. So I want to thank them, um, for all that. I want to specifically thank the people in my department, specifically, I want to thank Margaret on behalf of myself and Jason, but also you guys, because of the, the work that she's done, gone above and beyond, I think, to serve, and helped in kind of an interim capacity, you know, prior to, uh, me coming on board, more so than probably would have normally been expected. Just, and also thanks to the council for giving me the opportunity to, um, serve the community, and look forward to continuing to make positive changes in the community going forward with you guys in twenty twenty-one. Um, I just want to wish everybody a safe, healthy, and prosperous twenty twenty-one, um, and looking forward to hopefully new, new and, and additional things that we can accomplish in twenty-one, again, at also a little bit of a measured pace.
Yeah. Yes, no, I appreciate that, yeah, Margaret has done a phenomenal job, uh, filling in the gaps, um, from, you know, before you were actually here, getting all this ready for us, doing the meeting minutes and things like that, and she has gone above and beyond, and her work is much appreciated. Yes, definitely. Mr. Westlin, anything?
No, um, appreciate the appointment last year and the reappointment this year, and gotten to know you guys a lot better over the year, and, um, Craig and Beth and, and, and a lot of the staff, and, and look forward to a, a continued working relationship, uh, into next year. Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to number nine, uh, which is our, I'm sorry, yes, it is number nine, request to purchase, um, Beth?
Oh, hang on one second, I have two packets here.
Yep.
So I want to find where I left my notes. Okey-dokey, so we had nine requests to purchase totaling two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents, um, that we, you should have all received, and we're looking for approval.
Okay, so we're looking for approval on all nine of those, uh.
Yes, please.
Requests to purchase, do I have a motion? So moved. Thank you, is there support?
I'll second.
Thank you, Wayne, roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Paul Panzak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Jerry Swatz.